Okay, guys, it's seven o'clock, so I'd like to. Littleton best for tomorrow, Urban Renewal Authority. I'm Justin Hay, the chairman. And the commissioners present tonight are Gary Thompson, Ryan Tool, Craig O'Rourke. Let's see, tonight we have Madonna Jurgensen, Jim Collins, and Kyle Schlechter. Are all three absent, but we do have quorum with the four of us. So Jim Reese, our executive director, is present tonight, as well as Corey Hoffman, our legal rep. And I'd like to welcome Bill Hopping, our city council liaison, to the table tonight. So, welcome, Bill. The last few meetings have been canceled. Our last meeting was actually in December. So we have a few things to go over, but the next item on the agenda is to review, or actually just the approval of our minutes from our last meeting in December. I did review the video recording, and it is up and operational.
I don't know if you noticed, your packet, this is new. The city clerk, Wendy Effer, has actually certified. Never had that before.
I'm sorry?
If you look on page one there, in your packet, you have a staff communication.
Oh, so.
Wendy.
So we're approved. Is that how it goes now? With the digital?
I did not ask her to do that, because we normally just do it ourselves.
Okay, so she's certified, Wendy did. Okay, great.
I still think you need to vote on her. Vote to accept her certification?
Yes.
We do, yeah. So if we have a motion?
I move to approve based on the recording secretary's certification of December 10 video as the minutes for the December 10, 2015, regular meeting at the lift board.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? Any objection to the motion? Okay, motion passes to approve the video recording meeting minutes from December 10, 2016. Next is our announcements. Do we have any announcements up front tonight? No, we have some things to discuss later on, but, okay. Fourth item here is our public appearances. So anybody here tonight from the public, if you'd like to step up to the podium? You have four minutes and identify yourself, I believe. Well, I don't see a microphone up there, so I think in the past we've just stepped up to any of the microphones that are active around the table and.
Oh, good, thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Bree-Zack. I have not had time to really review all your documents. I just learned about your meeting earlier this afternoon. But I do have a few questions. I've looked at your tax increment finance breakdown on your budget sheets, and they differ somewhat from what the county has recorded. So I'd like an explanation for that. I'd like to know if you have created your special fund for the increment to be deposited in? Have you received any increment in that fund? I've noticed that there's no sales tax increment that's been collected for 2015. There's no estimate. I'd like to know why. And I also see that the Rapid Hill County has been dropped from your increment sheets on each of your urban renewal areas, and I'd like to know why. And I'm wondering if you're aware of the action before council on April 5th to unravel lift? And I was surprised not to see a discussion of that item on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. I think some of those items we can address later in our conversation tonight. Anybody else? Okay, that closes our public appearances tonight. Next item is our financial report, February 29, 2016. And Jim, do you want to walk through our three items underneath that, please?
Sure. Okay, so on the balance sheet, first off, there hasn't been a lot of activity because of the situation with our checking account and not being able to access the funds because it's basically frozen. So, weren't a lot of checks cut. And so you can kind of see very little activity. Your balance, 44, 435, 31. Back into some of the sheets. See the, there's not too many. Under available budget, you can see there's really no revenue that's come in. And we're only documenting a couple of expenditures. One for my time, for 1,040. One for Corey's time, for 1,055. And $147.82 was the cost of buying checks. Want to go through the detail? There's now, of course, the city is now reporting on each one of our individual capital accounts. So we have, you know, basically, Columbine, again, no income. We have what our budget is in there, which is developer fees of 60,000, and retainer fees of 10, which was what we budgeted, total of 70. But you can see there's no revenue collected on that. The same is true of Littleton Boulevard. We were projecting a tax increment of $4,800 on that. There were developer fees on that. North Broadway, projecting 44, 907. There were developer fees on that. And then for Santa Fe, we have property tax.
Where is that on?
That's what we're predicting is property tax, right. And then fees of 59,000, which would be the difference between 60,000 and the 582. For total of 70 with the retainer agreement. And nothing has been collected on that.
I can't hear you.
Under the general ledger, it just gives you the more detail of the three expenditures that were on there. So with that, are there any questions?
That was it?
Just in response to one of Carol's questions there about the amount of tax increment that's been collected, I believe the city, the county actually sent a check to the city for some of these revenues. A little bit's come in, it's been, it's things like a couple thousand dollars. I have not seen the checks yet, so. But in the future, we're going to set that up as an ACH transaction that'll go from the county treasurer's office to our, we have an account with COLO Trust, and that's typically where government entities keep all their funds that they're not expending. So we will keep all those funds in COLO Trust, and the city will track them via ledger for each individual project. So the idea would be to collect those funds as they come in, recognizing, of course, that we have an obligation to refund those collections to Littleton Public Schools, urban drainage, and.
Salsabur.
Right, Salsabur. So the bulk of that money usually comes in when people pay their taxes, which is usually in April, and maybe it still trickle in, you know, July, August, that timeframe. So, yeah, what we kind of concluded was, okay, let's wait until the bulk of that money comes in and then cut them a check at that point. So we may end up doing it a couple of times, but we'll wait till we get the, after April for the first one. What I have on that?
All right, good. Do I have a motion to approve the financial report?
I still move.
We have a motion and a second. Any objection or discussion? Okay, motion to approve the financial report, passes. Okay, next on the agenda is our committee reports. And Jim, we'll start with you, please.
I don't have anything new to report here. Corey and I have both been attending these meetings on trying to get the House Bill 1348 revisions corrected for, at the state level. And there, you may know more than I do, there was supposed to be legislation introduced very shortly. Has it happened yet?
It's not dropped, but it's any day, supposedly.
It doesn't address all the issues, by the way. There's still going to be some problems that we have to face. One is the section that's called applicability, is, and basically, when does the statute pertain to plans? Okay? So the argument, I guess, is over whether or not plans that were approved prior to January 1 of 2016 are affected in any way by this, unless they're amended. So those on the municipal side and the urban renewal side would say no, but the counties and some of the others are arguing that it should.
I guess I would say the counties are trying to get changes to the statute to make it apply to projects that occurred pre-January 1, 2016, have been unsuccessful. The bill that is to be dropped shortly is a consensus bill that the taxing entities and their groups, so SDA and CCI, and then CML, agreed upon. So there is a fix to fix a Tabor problem that was created by House Bill 1348. There's a fix to make the mediation process a little more certain in House Bill 1348. But Jim's right, the issue of applicability is not being addressed. And one of the concerns is that existing financing from projects years ago could be construed to be impacted when new undertakings or activities are improved. And there is a desire at some point to fix that, but it's not going to be this year.
So it's just really small housekeeping matters in this proposed bill?
The only, I would say, housekeeping matters. I don't think the Tabor issue is a small one.
Yeah, because that's not insignificant.
That was a significant mistake in 1348 that's been fixed.
Fix a mistake.
And the issue ultimately was that the way 1348 was drafted, the money didn't go into the special fund first, even if you have agreements with other taxing entities. When money goes into the special fund, it is not subject to Tabor, because urban renewal authorities are not, they don't collect, they don't impose a mill levy, therefore they're not Tabor entities. And so what that means is a practical matter is if an urban renewal authority and, say, a special district, enter into an agreement to share back increment, as long as it goes through the special fund, it is not subject annual appropriation. If it doesn't touch the special fund, it is subject to annual appropriation. And 1348 created that problem. This proposed bill will hopefully fix that.
Without addressing the applicability issue, things remain status quo, which means a disagreement about whether it's applicable, so the statute language is not clear that prior projects.
Well, what is clear is new projects, and any amended plans will be affected by it.
I mean, I have a strong opinion that House Bill 1348 does not apply to plans that were finalized before January 1, 2016. I know that folks with other taxing entities might disagree with me.
Well, that's the biggest piece of news. I don't know if you want to talk about city council's action at this point?
Yeah, I think maybe we can layer that into.
Attorney's report?
Corey's report, and let's talk about April 5.
Okay, so under my report, I am going to provide to you verbatim a motion that was made at the last council meeting that is really what is what I think Carol was talking about as it relates to what's being considered on April 5 on first reading. So there was a motion to direct the city manager to provide to council at the next scheduled regular council meeting on April 5, 2016, an ordinance or ordinances and resolutions for council's consideration and vote to dismantle Littleton's urban renewal and the lift board, including the handling of any, of the outstanding loan to lift, and addressing any tax collection concerns, if any, and consider the status of any pending litigation concerning urban renewal. That motion was approved, and so what that means is that on April 5, council will be considering an ordinance. They haven't approved it. They will be considering on first reading an ordinance on whether to abolish this board. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that. I mean.
What was the vote to approve the motion to bring the ordinance forth?
Five-two.
Five-two. Bill probably knows more about it than anybody who was there.
But five-two. I think Corey summarized it quite well, so.
And, look, what I would say is this. I have said throughout the urban renewal process that the way, my view of how urban renewal works, is that the city council legislatively adopts a plan, and the urban renewal authority is tasked with implementing the city council's plan. If the city council desires not to have a plan anymore, that's certainly within its legislative decision-making authority to do so. So that's what they will be considering.
So Corey, and maybe this is just a legal matter that I'm confused over, having never gone down this road before, if in fact council decides to do that and disband the urban renewal board, what's the status then of the approved plans?
I think the ordinance will address that, but the, if the ordinance is to abolish the lift board, I think by definition, the plans have to be dealt with and ultimately repealed.
So that would take a separate action, you think, of council, like a separate ordinance?
Or it could be in the same ordinance.
Okay.
Because ultimately, to have, the only thing an urban renewal authority does is implement a plan. If the authority is abolished, there shouldn't be a plan, because there's no one to implement it. It risked sounding overly circular, but that's.
Final vote out of the motion will be on the 5th?
It is on first reading on the 5th. So, you know, if it is approved on the 5th, then there would be a second reading on the It does have to be done by ordinance, so it requires two readings.
So is there an opportunity to give any kind of testimony, public input, that kind of thing, other than the three minutes in the beginning of the?
I believe, and I don't represent the city, but I believe there is an opportunity at the 19th on second reading, but maybe not. It may be that there's just a public comment, but, and that's, each of you have to decide how you want to approach that, but in my mind, I still say that this is the legislative determination of the city council. You know, so that it's certainly as individuals, each of you have a right to speak if you would want, but ultimately, this is a legislative call for the council.
Do we know if there were any prior public discussions by council or anything of the sort leading to the motion prior to council meeting?
I don't.
When the motion was brought to? Do we know of any other?
Councilmember Hopping, they know. I don't. I've not attended the council meetings.
I got a call that there were four votes, and that was the end of it.
So there was no public input, no discussion?
I mean, there's certainly an opportunity to do that. Anytime there's a first reading, you can, the first part of the council meeting, there is an opportunity for public comment about anything that's on the agenda that night. And if something's up for first reading, you can comment about that. And then when something comes up for a second reading, there's a public hearing, and you have an opportunity to discuss it at that point, no matter what the subject is.
Sure. I mean, I think as a board, you know, my opinion just on this board is, I think we all have understood where things have been going, you know, over the last six to eight months here. You know, we've all sat around this table and talked about how we, you know, move this board forward in a positive direction, and how we can find opportunities to bring projects in, et cetera. And, you know, I for one am disappointed that, you know, this obviously has been a process to this point, and, you know, knowing that we're here to assist this city in moving, you know, projects hopefully forward and revitalizing our community and development in other unique ways. And so, you know, unfortunately, this is, obviously, like you said, it's a council decision. It's, you know, we're here to kind of, as a vehicle to them. So, you know, I don't know if you guys are interested in speaking, or, like you said, Corey, it's kind of a personal, you know, individual vetting that you need to do in order to maybe make that decision, but certainly, you know, when you look back at the history of urban renewal and things here in Littleton, it's been a, an interesting process here to get to this point, to say the least. And I for one am pretty, you know, I'm upset that it's unfortunately kind of going in this direction in front of council, but.
Well, particularly without any interaction between this board and council. We, at one point, were scheduled to have some direct dialogue with council, and reasons that were never made clear to me.
It was canceled.
It was canceled. But I presume that was partly a political decision. They did not want to engage in discussion with the board about this pending activity at the council.
Yeah, and I did not get an explanation why the meeting didn't happen, so I can't speculate.
Bill, can you comment on that?
I really don't have a comment on it, because I don't really know why that happened. You know, you could request formally, you know, a conversation with council. It's always within your authority or your right to do that. Whether or not that would be granted will be up to council or, you know, to determine if that would happen. Now, you, you're a board, but you're also a citizen, so you can ask for whatever you want. And I think, you know, if you think through your options, you can come up with any alternatives a regular citizen would have. You can ask for a couple of dialogues, you can ask for study sessions, you can ask for deferral, you can ask for alternative motions. You can, you're, this is not quasi-judicial on the part of council, so you can certainly lobby council members. You know, those are, those are your rights under anything that comes before council, so. Other than that, I don't.
I do think that there would be greater use of a study session between this board and members of council, rather than individual lobbying outside the parameters of operating the urban renewal board. I know that there are people who believe that urban renewal is not necessary, and that the community is fine without it, but I've seen it work wonderful effects in other communities, making things happen that would not otherwise happen, and preventing the long-term decline of the economic base of a community. And it seems to me that it would be good for this board to engage in a direct dialogue with council about the benefits of urban renewal and what the disappointment in the current process has been that has led to this motion, to see if there isn't a way to address that, rather than simply throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Which I think those were Bill's words exactly at council.
To that effect, and I have three questions that I ask, and one of them was, are people, you know, what's the real issue? You know, is it with the way it's been administered? Most of the comments that I've heard in complaint have been detail. I mean, it's about, you know, where a fund is, or why an amount was where it was, or whatever. So is it the way it's been administered? If it's urban renewal in general that presents some sort of a ubiquitous problem from your urban renewal law that is disliked, or is it some other reason? You know, what's the reason? Never really heard that. And I'd be very interested in that, because it is a tool that goes in the tool chest, and if you're going to get rid of a tool, I think it'd be good to have reasons why, rather than, you know, public pressure. So those are the questions I'd ask. So, you know, I think, however those answers come out will be good with man. You would, you know, you would think a study session might work, but study sessions are not really a time for discourse. I mean, council talks about something, but it's not, I don't know that it's really presented in a way that there's dialogue about it. You know, what's, you know, we're hearing good points, we're hearing bad points, you know, what's the real thing? And I think we all want to do what's right for the community and good for the community. And that should be an intelligent intellectual conversation, rather than, you know, anything else. So, you know, how that arrives, that is a good question.
Well, and certainly, in terms of control over what does get implemented as far as the plans, city council is the ultimate authority here. And I suppose there are other things we could do to increase that if they really, really desired that, versus basically killing all of it.
And that's, maybe Corey has alternatives, I don't, you know.
If the board is dismantled and the urban renewal plans are terminated, and then a developer requests tax increment financing from the city, does that fall outside of the ordinance limiting tax increment?
Only Corey answered that, but it's more complicated in Littleton.
No, I mean, there's a fairly easy answer to that. And that is that if a developer wanted tax increment financing, they could certainly start the process of creating an urban renewal authority anew. It would be if it had a TIF provision, subject to voter approval, under the charter provision. But, you know, let's say that, for example, there is an undeveloped parcel that, or a parcel that needs, the developer thinks needs urban renewal to make it work. They could make that pitch to council. Council would have to go through the entire process that it went through in creating the four areas recently for this one new urban renewal area, and have the BLIGHT study, have a plan approved. And if that plan was approved and had TIF as one of its components, which would be, you know, under your scenario, why it was approved in the first instance, council could do so, create the authority, approve the plan, but that plan would be subject to voter approval.
Is that the case with all tax sharing, tax revenue sharing agreements?
No. So that without urban renewal, the city council can still approve tax sharing, sales tax sharing agreements. The difference, at least in my mind, the fundamental difference, is that a sales tax shareback with general fund, sales tax, is subject annual appropriation under Colorado law, whereas if you have increment through an urban renewal authority, it is not.
And it's a shareback, so under urban renewal, we can bond those revenues. I'm not sure under a sales tax shareback that would even be bankable.
The reason it's typically, the reason it's typically not is because it is subject annual appropriation. Now, there are communities that have voted on sales tax sharebacks to get voter approval for them, so they're not subject annual appropriation. I mean, North Glen did that years ago with the North Glen Mall. When it became the North Glen Marketplace, the developer went to the voters of North Glen, so that the sales tax shareback was not subject annual appropriation. So it's been done, but it's a much more onerous process.
And there's no method of really doing anything with property taxes, or?
You can certainly.
Well, the city could, their portion. That's a very small piece of the whole pie.
I guess what I'm getting at is that, trying to understand whether the loss of the urban renewal mechanism and the urban renewal authority in those areas severely impairs the ability of the city government to work with the real estate development community to subsidize difficult redevelopment projects. And I think the answer is yes. Without the urban renewal authority, not much can happen in terms of the city working to help fund difficult infrastructure issues for development.
No, yeah, but Littleton comes at a severe disadvantage to the rest of the metro region that hasn't.
Well, and I don't want to, I don't want to talk, I mean, the council has to make a policy decision, okay? So I'm going to try to make, take the, do this as dispassionately as I can. I think I've talked a lot about nomenclature and wording matters. And one of the discussions at the state, at the state capitol historically, is how terminology works. And I think the other taxing entities use the term divert. You're diverting tax revenues. And that's inconsistent with state law. The idea is that TIF is not the revenue of the other taxing entities. It is a source of revenue that is available under the Colorado urban renewal law to urban renewal authorities if the city chooses to have them. The city. The city would be choosing to take that option away. And so it takes away the opportunity to have TIF, which is revenue that is for a specific purpose, the purpose of redevelopment and eliminating BLIGHT, that is otherwise available to it. So, yes, it eliminates a, a tool and a revenue source that is there for that purpose.
Corey?
I'd like to maybe add, and maybe this bill in your three questions to council might be considered and to the community that's listening would be, you know, you mentioned, Ryan, our tools that we've used, you know, the BLIGHT study, you know, the resources that we've, we've created over the years, documentation, information about properties, surveying, all these, these tools that essentially the community has paid for and we are indebted back to the city for. You know, in addition to obviously the, the biggest piece of TIF and using that, you know, can these items still be used in, in some form or fashion? In some way, just even in a planning perspective or a real estate perspective, to throw those out just would seem like a complete and utter waste of money and resources, number one. Number two would be, you know, our debt owed, which, you know, we've been tasked to bring projects and move, move forward with, with potential deals to begin paying back the city and then, you know, obviously be in the black with our, with our financial situation to begin to grow the community in the right direction. So it's those two items. I'm curious, Corey, what your thoughts are on those? And then, you know, the potential to, to utilize those tools that have been essentially completed and paid for in a way.
Well, I think as part, well, I know as part of the ordinance that council will consider, if adopted, it has to provide adequate arrangements for the payment of any outstanding indebtedness. So currently, there is an indebtedness of this body to the city. And so when the city considers the ordinance, it has to consider how to address that outstanding indebtedness. And that is the only outstanding indebtedness of this authority. So that will have to be dealt with. It is required by law. For what it's worth, the effective date of the abolishment of the urban renewal authority, if it is approved, can't be any less than six months from the effective date of the ordinance. So by statute, the urban renewal authority will continue to exist at least six months from the effective date. And the idea is that gives time to wind down to the, if it is approved. With regards to your second question about all of the stuff, there is a, a whole bunch of data on all of the properties in the urban renewal areas as they exist now. And that, that will stay in the database of the city. The city will have that information now. If the city approves the abolition or the abolishment of the urban renewal authority, the plans themselves, as I indicated, would be repealed. But the information on the various properties, you know, on the, on the city's GIS database, for example, and all of that will still be data the city has and can use. It's got incredible information on all of those properties through all the work that the consultants did. That will always be available.
Although without an urban renewal authority to create a funding support mechanism, it isn't, the information really isn't that useful.
City will know where the issues are in the city, undoubtedly. It has, as, as identified by, you know, Rick or Cunningham and is approved by council in the, in the original BLIGHT study. They know where the, at least as identified by the consultants and approved, where the issues are. But you're right, they don't have the tools necessarily to address them.
So, back to your original question, I mean, if we had a development proposal that came in and wanted to financing, it would be a pretty long process to get there. For some developers, that becomes totally impractical.
Well, we will find out what the pleasure of the council is.
Yeah, next week.
One thing that the board may consider is if, if council passes this, then what incentive programs are there available to attract developers if you do away with that one? Because it, urban renewal as a tool is something that you choose to attract, in my mind, and I work on the other side, as Ryan does, some, the best quality developers. And if you're going to have development in your city or people build things in your city, the develop, where development is sometimes a dirty word, want to be able to choose the best ones. So what, what tools are available if you do away with urban renewal? I'm not, I'm not sure that side of the picture is fully understood. So that may be something the board would want to consider or individuals on the board may want to consider asking. You know, is that, what do we have to do? Or do we put ourselves in a position where we accept second-rate developers, less quality building, and, you know, the, the long-range impacts come from that?
Well, we had some discussions when I was able to sit in on a study session with planning, planning board. And we've kind of talked about our application process of utilizing that as projects came in as a great kind of initial filter before it's going in, you know, on the, on the urban renewal side. It filters the level of, of developers. And I know there's a lot of history with urban renewal here back to the 80s. But today, utilizing what we've learned in the past to look at the potential developers and the high-level design and their financial capabilities and, and holding the accountability to those filtration systems that we'll put in place. And so, yeah, I mean, where that goes and how that kind of filters into council and planning and, and beyond is, is, you know, something of a good point. But yeah, certainly it's, it's a big component now of, of all the highlighted areas in our BLIGHT study and what's to come there and how that's going to be filtered, so.
Ken, does anybody else have a comment on this?
I do have one other sort of related yet unrelated comment, and that is that we are still awaiting a decision from the Arapahoe County District Court on the city's trial in January. So we still have no decision. I would, I always hope that under the attorney's report I can report to you, but my report is I got nothing.
Too bad. It'd be nice if you knew the answer to that at least, you know, answer a lot of questions. John Littleton, actually.
Okay, well, with that, let's move through the rest of the agenda. Let's go on to unfinished business. And we did approve the 2016 budget in our last meeting, and there were some revisions. And Jim, maybe you can highlight those. And then do we need to, since we did approve essentially the resolution, I think the, the stipulation was if we increased any of the budgetary amounts that that would.
On the expenditure side, yeah.
Right. Can you just kind of describe that, where we were and where we are today?
So when you're packing, you have a resolution that we need you to act on. And this was basically following your direction that when you approved the budget, there was a lot of questions about the actual tax increment revenue that was going to come in. And I had many discussions after that with the assessor's office. But finally, the ultimate report came from the Arapahoe County Treasurer's Office, and it listed the exact amounts of what the increment was going to be. So using that, it was lower. The, the projected revenue was, was a lot lower than what we originally were told. So basically, I adjusted all those numbers, and I can go through every one of them if you want me to. It's, it would basically.
Can you walk through it real quick?
Sure, so you'd, you'd have to go to your capital projects funds in there. And the first one that I've got attached there is the Columbine one. And this is in the state format. You have to, when we, when we present this budget to the state, you have to list three years. So this shows 14, even though there was no activity in 14 or, or 15 for that matter. So anyway, going with Columbine, there is no projected increment because there's no development activity incurring in Columbine. So all, anything that's, that's created any increased tax revenue would be all attributed to the base. So it would all go to basically all the taxing entities. Littleton Boulevard, you can see there, they're projecting $25,531. And as you can see, under the refund, again, you have agreements with Littleton Public Schools, City of Littleton, South Suburban, and Urban Drainage to refund that amount absent a development project proposal. And so you can see that this reflects refund, funding that. We don't have such an agreement with Arapahoe County. Okay, so then you can kind of see the net difference is the $4,823.29, which would go into your budget. Again, North Broadway, this one is projecting $238,268. If you run the formulas for the refund, you can see that we'd be refunding $193,360.32, leaving LIFT with a balance of almost $45,000. Moving on to Santa Fe, again, not a lot here either, estimated $3,091. And that would be refunded in the amount of $2,508, leaving $582.58. So those are the revisions. And again, the expenditure side did not change at all.
Ken?
Yes, we need a motion adopting this resolution.
Is this an open, we already had it open in, last year in December, I believe, we had an open public comment. And anything not addressed earlier is foreclosed, public comment at this time. We had that open in 2015, December, when we had this. I understand, it's just, it's not part of our, our public comment at this time, so. Okay, so we do need to re-approve this, is that what I understand?
I'll move to approve resolution 20-15 as presented.
Second, a motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, a motion and a second to approve the stated resolution for the amended 2016 LIFT budget. All those four, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, the 2016 amended budget resolution passes unanimously. Gary is going to talk a little bit about our bank statement and what's been going on over the last couple of months with some fraudulent withdrawals, so.
Okay, well, and I believe that was, it was also addressed by Jim Reese at our December meeting. There had been a number of withdrawals out of the checking account fraudulently done, which were then, as soon as the LIFT board was aware of that, through the city.
First bank statement.
Yeah, first bank statement, we immediately notified, or that, that happened back in December, notified Wells Fargo. That's where the checking account is. And then there was some more fraudulent activity in December. So in, in early December, early January, then I, I just went to Wells Fargo, since I'm a signer on that checking account, and had them put a hold on the account so that no more money could come out of that checking account at all. And then, then worked with Wells Fargo then to open a new account, a new checking account. And so that was done. And a portion of the funds in the checking account was moved into that new checking account. And then, so then.
$25,000.
Twenty-five thousand was moved into the new checking account. The old account was left in existence so that Wells Fargo would have a place to reimburse money back into that account, to get all the money back into that account. And then, once that is done, then transfer that money from that, from the old account into the new checking account. Close the old one, and there we go. And that, that is really the process, that's where we are in that, in that process. Along the way, as, as I was working with Wells Fargo to open the new checking account, it, it came to light that Justin Hay and I, two years ago, had signed the paperwork to become the signors of the, on the LIFT checking account, two years ago. And, but for some reason, Wells Fargo had lost that paperwork and doesn't seem to be in their system at all. So the official signers on the LIFT account continued to be a former chairman of this board, this committee. And it just so happened that I was on at that time, and so I'm actual signer on the old account. And so therefore, that's how I was able to be the person to be doing this paperwork. The checking account is very old. It was opened actually with Norwest Bank, which then merged with some other bank, which then merged with Wells Fargo. So we're, our account was opened two banks back. And the official name on the checking account is something like.
Riverfront.
Riverfront.
Riverfront authority.
We have, we're doing business in a different name, and that doesn't match up. So Wells Fargo was, Jim Reese is in, has been in the process of getting officially through the IRS. Our.
Problem is that the employee, employer identification number didn't match up.
Well, because of that name difference.
That name matched up with the other name, but we had changed the name back in 2013. I believe this board actually took action and changed the name to LIFT. And the, so Wells Fargo was having a tough time basically saying the name in the account and the employee identification number don't match up, you need to get that changed. So I went to the process of going through the IRS to contact them to, to make the name change match and was informed at that point that when whoever, and this goes way back, basically filed the number with the IRS listed LIFT as a nonprofit, which is wrong. And a nonprofit has certain limitations on its tax exempt status. And basically, they told me that because we forgot to file a certain form that's required every couple of years, they lost the tax status. So I informed them that that's, was totally wrong, that this is a government entity and that they should change that whole classification. Well, that required documentation, of course, and I had to send them the actual council action that formed the urban renewal authority back in 1982, maybe?
I don't recall.
I've got that, anyhow.
Whatever, been a years ago.
Yeah, that, plus the action that this board took, changing the name. And I was informed that it will take up to 60 days for them to address that. I have called repeatedly to see if by any chance it's moving along and been told it could take up to 60 days. So we're in a loop.
Well, well, so we're, I mean, I would, I would say more that there are things in process. The, the money is, that is fraudulently removed from our account is being restored by Wells Fargo in full. We have a checking account that is functional, that has, a few checks have been written on it, about $25,000. Plus, the remaining money is safely, I suppose, in, in the old checking account.
It's still on hold, right?
Which is still.
No, no transaction can happen in that old account.
Right.
Except for them refunding.
Right. And then, of course, as we opened, we opened the new account and transferred the $25,000 into the new account, Wells Fargo took, temporarily took the hold off of the old account just to make, so there could be the transfer into the new account and didn't get the hold put back on it immediately. And, and another fraudulent transaction went through, so.
I would, I would say this is a major oversight by Wells Fargo.
Well, I, I don't know, but I, I have to say, though, the people at Wells Fargo have been very helpful and have, I've met with them many times and Jim as well and. been very helpful and have, I've met with them many times, and Jim as well, and it's just an unfortunate situation that is being rectified in the due course of time.
Gives you a sense that the perpetrator may have had knowledge of the status of the account.
I agree.
I have no idea, I know nothing about, anything about how this has come to pass.
But Wells Fargo is going to make it right and refund the money, and I presume it wasn't a great deal of money.
And we have received a number of letters from Wells Fargo saying, we have checked into this transaction and we are refunding this much, so we have the paperwork that shows when they've actually rectified the problems. There's a couple that are still outstanding, though.
Okay. Well, hopefully, we can get that wrapped up in six months or so.
Nothing like getting kicked when you're down, right? On to new business.
Oh, okay, it's back to me again.
The 2015 exemption from audit.
Yes, so we need, we actually need two things here. Remember when we, since we haven't met, we did get this proposal for a contract from ACM to do the exemption from audit, and I did send out an email to each one of you to say, would you allow Justin to sign that? But we do need it ratified, because you need to take that as a formal action at this meeting, so I need that. And then we also need to have you approve the exemption from audit application, and you'll each have to sign it. And so we have a resolution for the exemption from audit, but we probably ought to do the ratification inquiry, I'm not sure how that works.
Yeah, I'm, well, you're ratifying, the resolution is actually the ratification document.
Okay.
So if you approve the resolution, that'll serve to ratify that.
Okay, so if we just vote on the approval of this exemption from audit, then that ratifies the document that I signed that everybody agreed upon via email.
That authorized...
When you authorized.
The accountant, the auditor, to do the work.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on what we talked about on this audit exemption?
This is the same thing we did last year, right?
Correct.
Correct.
That has to be turned in tomorrow.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Well, so, I'm not sure the form of the motion, I, I...
Gary, just read the resolution right here.
We're, here.
To approve the resolution for exemption for audit.
Highlighted. All right. I move that we approve the resolution proving an exemption from audit for the year 2015 for the Littleton, that's for tomorrow, Urban Renewal Authority.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion to the motion? No? Okay, I have a motion and a second to adopt and approve the resolution proving an exemption from audit for the year 2015 for Lyft. All those four, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the resolution passes unanimously. Okay, guys, do we have anything else under other tonight?
I wanted to raise an issue that may quickly become moot. We've had a number of discussions in this board meeting about the need to reach out to the public community and somehow engage the community a little more effectively, helping them understand what opportunities are available. I, just in the, in the course of my ordinary business, became aware of two significant properties within our urban renewal areas that are on the market for sale. One is the Chomp Automotive Complex, and the other is the Savers Store at the Woodlawn Shopping Center. I called the real estate agents representing those properties, identified myself as a member of the Urban Renewal Authority Board, and asked them if they were aware of the existence of an urban renewal district within which their property was located and what the potential benefits were, and they did not know. They had sat down with members of staff in the planning department and had discussed the potential for redevelopment of these sites, and urban renewal was not brought up by staff as a potential element of redevelopment. And in one case, the developer, the potential buyer of one of those sites, became aware of it on his own and looked into it and was informed by the city that it would have to go to a public vote, and that therefore it would take a long time, and the developer dropped his contract to purchase the property as a result of that misinformation. I, I think our hands as a board and as an urban renewal authority have been inadvertently probably tied by misunderstanding and disinterest on the part of the city staff. But I think it may not be material after Tuesday or after the 19th.
What was the status of the Chomp? I heard the Savers portion, but Chomp has been up, is it that two acres or so?
No, it's larger than that.
Goes all the way back to the east.
It goes all the way back, I forget how big it is, but it's eight, eight or nine acres of property. It's very significant, there are four buildings on it, and Chomp, of course, is relocated to their complex down on 470, and the property is for sale and is, is being promoted as a redevelopment opportunity, and it is in the urban renewal district. First of all, I don't think the development community knows that it's in an urban renewal district, and certainly, they're not getting good information about what that might mean for the cost of redeveloping a site like that.
We've had meetings with city planning to discuss helping to promote our urban renewal project.
Right. Yeah, I know, we've had meetings, you know, with economic development, you know, as I mentioned earlier, I sat in on planning study session, I think I relayed that meeting information on, you know, post-meeting late last year, you know, talking about how there can be a symbiotic relationship and how urban renewal works with the staff and planning and, and, you know, I'm on the private side working on projects here in Littleton, so, you know, I'm involved with staff and, you know, I, it's always seemed like they, they're obviously, staff is willing to discuss, you know, urban renewal and the plans in the area with any type of potential project or developer that's come online, but, yeah, I mean, as a case by case, maybe there was some, you know, it's been slipping through the cracks.
And maybe there's a lack of understanding of what it might truly mean for the pro forma of a development project. Last fall, Kyle volunteered to work up a kind of a, I don't know whether it would be a news release or a white paper on the urban renewal opportunity, and I think that if the action by council does not result in the disbanding of the Urban Renewal Authority, I think we need to revisit that and, and strengthen and broaden that and turn it into a marketing piece in the sense that it provides good, clear information to the development community about what is possible and how to start the process, and make an effort to disseminate that widely and get it in the hands of the planning staff and board members like I. When I spoke to the real estate agents representing these properties, I didn't have anything to send them. All I could talk to them, all I could do was talk to them about the potential. We, if we remain in business, we need to have something that we can deliver to a potential developer.
Right, and I believe we were talking about even having a work session to do that dritty thing before, of course, we found out about council's action now, but I would agree, I think we should.
And I did, for what it's worth, have what we referred to as an urban renewal. It was not a 101, because it was intended to be a little more advanced, urban renewal 201 with the city staff within the last couple of months, and so I would hope that some of that, again, depending on what happens in April, but there was a discussion with city staff about kind of how the tool works and how it can work in more detail. I don't know if it was before or after the discussions with Chomp and Savers, but...
Well, certainly on Savers, I think it was after, and it's probable that it was after on Chomp as well. These projects have been in the works for a while.
Thanks, Ryan. Is there anything else, guys, under other? Well, our next meeting is April 14th. Depending on, you know, well, I guess what we can do is obviously keep it on the calendar as, in, in moving forward and, you know, have some discussion appropriately after the 5th. We'll go from there.
Is there any chance we could invite city council members to that meeting and have more of a dialogue, albeit public, but instead of a study session? Bill, is there any chance that, that members, particularly members of council who are inclined to disband the Urban Renewal Authority, if we had an opportunity to explain to them directly in this meeting room what that means for the community and the opportunities that might be lost, I think it would be valuable, at least for their decision-making process when they vote again on the 19th.
I certainly think that's, you know, an appropriate question to ask. You might direct it through the city attorney and the attorney's office, and it'd have to be a posted meeting and all that, but we had one scheduled that was, was canceled, and I think it's, you know, all I've heard since I came on council a year ago is things against urban renewal, I haven't heard anything for it. And certainly, if you're going to make a decision, you should hear both sides of the issue.
I can certainly, if this board would like, convey the invitation to the city attorney's office tomorrow, and I'm sure she can convey it to the city manager, that they're invited to a meeting on the 14th and let us, let you know in advance so that if they desire to attend, that might go into your decision-making as to whether they have the meeting.
I think that'd be fine, yeah?
Please. I will, I will convey the invitation.
All right, guys. Other than that, meeting's adjourned.